It is.
All right.
Another one?
He got it. Sorry, a little loud.
All right. It is 5:35 on Monday, July 25th, 2022. This is a work session for the City Council, City of Now Then. The work session is to first shot at the budget here and a couple of resolutions addressing the administrator, the border-to-border broadband grant. Is there one other thing?
Mayor members of the council, there was a late addition as a resolution supporting Anoka County.
Oh.
Yeah.
With respect to their expansion of broadband services to the city of Now Then and in fact, every city in Anoka County. I apologize for the lateness. I did receive that, I think it was Thursday or Friday.
I think it was Friday.
But it seemed to fit well with the other agenda materials you have.
All right. Mr. Brawls, would you please call roll?
Certainly. Mayor Pillon?
Present.
Councilmember Alders?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rainville?
Here.
All right. So with the addition of the Anoka County broadband resolution, do we have any other amendments to the agenda? Saying in hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Actually, what I'd like to do is reorder them a bit, leave the budget study to the last. So D right now is the Anoka County broadband. I'd like that to be A. Item B would stay B. Item A would go C, and item C would go D. So it'd be Anoka County broadband, approval of the resolution of the border-to-border grant, approval of the resolution naming the administrator, and then the budget. Council okay with that?
Yep.
All right, with that amendment, I have a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Rainville makes a motion.
Second.
And Councilmember Greenberg makes his second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have something that was sent to us by the county that they're asking for support on their broadband initiative. As you remember, we got $150,000 for municipality in Anoka County to use towards broadband. And then they decided to conduct a survey to see what the actual served and underserved and unserved areas were in the county. And they were hoping to get that done in time to qualify for border-to-border broadband grants. Well, the broadband grants are due no later, completed no later than August 4th. I don't know if their survey's going to be back in time. But as part of that initiative, they're asking every city in the county to sign their resolution saying, "We support using ARPA funds for this once they can figure it out."
Did everyone get, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Did all the residents get a survey? Or just?
All the, all the residents had access to the survey? Very few of them actually completed. Now Then was better represented than the other cities. I went to the meeting with the Design 9 representative when he was here, and they had about 3% return across the county. Again, if you're in a city that has excellent service, it probably didn't cause you to return the survey.
Did you get it, Mayor? Did you get the survey?
Councilmember Rainville?
I believe every household got a flyer, a postcard from the county. And then I also posted that on the local Facebook page.
I also got a letter.
A letter, okay.
Yeah. And then they asked me to go online if I didn't get the letter back in a certain amount of time.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they had, they had better response online, which is...
Did a letter?
Which is kind of funny because if you don't have service, asking people to respond online was kind of a... I expressed that to them. I said, "If you don't have service, it's not easy to respond online." They had better response online than they did returning the postcards or returning the...
I was just interested in how far they went with that.
Yep. So anyway, they're now asking for support. Asking us to approve the resolution in support of trying to get service to Anoka County. So with that, does anybody have any questions on that resolution?
But I like it.
Mr. Mayor, is there any timeline, or is it just acceptance that they're going to do a study?
The study has been done. The acceptance is that this is, the city supports what they're going to be doing. We don't know what the results of that survey are yet. They're working with last mile providers, middle mile providers, to see what options are best and how they can best utilize a portion of the ARPA money that the county received. Our concern is that it won't be complete in time for cities to then complete a border-to-border request, grant request, which will be the next thing on our, on our list is talking about our version of that. Because they're so late in the game, I'm not sure they'll get it in, in order for people to actually put together a grant application and meet together in the first week of August.
When it's fast.
Yep. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So has Anoka County already received the funds? It's my understanding that they've already received the funds.
They received $69 million in ARPA funds.
Okay.
If you've noticed, they just put 29 million of that into a new 911 center.
Center.
They're working on a new jail. I don't know if any of that's ARPA funds or not. But there are a number of more politically expedient things they can do with that money. So I've had residents who call me. I have them calling county commissioners and county administrator. And basically, they're being told, "There's a lot of places we can be using that money." And most cities don't have the problem we have with broadband.
So, so even if we pass this resolution and support the county in their efforts, there is no guarantee that the county will turn around and use any of that money for broadband?
They are expressing that there will be potentially 3 million available. And that's actually what they gave out already to the cities was about 3 million. But it turns out to be 150,000 and a number of cities can't use it.
All right, thank you.
But no, it's... It looks like it's not going to be effective yet this year. Now, we don't know what, when the survey comes back, there's something, if you're familiar with broadband, there's last mile provider. That's the people who provide to the homes. Our problem is, it's called middle mile. It's the, what Arvig's been doing in neighborhoods, doing the infrastructure and what Zayo originally did, to bring fiber to the community and then have a last mile provider, Comcast or Arvig or Midco or whoever, bring it to the homes. So there is an initiative federally and statewide to start looking at mid mile, mid mile provider, which could then reach out into the neighborhoods and then Arvig or another company. We're looking at Midco potentially coming down from St. Francis. Comcast hasn't really expressed interest, if we don't have $14 million, but coming up from Ramsey or from Oak Grove, so. But first, we have to get the mid mile to the neighborhoods and then from the neighborhoods to the homes, so. Couple of different initiatives going on there.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so I would accept a motion to approve the resolution supporting the county's broadband efforts.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution offering support to Anoka County to expand broadband services in the city of Now Then, Resolution Number 2020-48.
We have a motion, Councilmember Greenberg?
Seconded.
And we have seconded, Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion? Saying in hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so then we have another resolution related to broadband. Because we didn't feel that the county was going to get information to us in time, we had last spring, late winter, early spring, initiated a proposal with Arvig to start working on a broadband, border-to-border broadband grant for a portion of the city that they thought they could get done in the timeframe allotted. And they have put together a packet that's in your packet. And it shows a portion of the city that they believe would qualify for the broadband grant, unserved, underserved. It's not a very big portion of the city, but it fits within the budget. We, we know we have an A. And we have $150,000 from the county. Our portion of this would be 165, so we'd have to have another $15,000 should this be approved. As you can see in your paperwork, total cost of the project would be about $549,000. Arvig would cover 30%. The state would cover 40%, and we would cover 30%. Like I said, we have 150 of that designated for this purpose. We just have to find in our budget another 15,000 should this be approved. That is what they could do. You have a list of the addresses that would be served and a map. Do you see what would be served? And they've got the documentation already. They want to get in, obviously, before the deadline, and they're, obviously need approval of the council to proceed. Councilmember Rainville?
So the 15, if they're successful in receiving the grant, we have 150,000 from the county, and then the 15,000, are we able to use our ARPA funds for that?
ARPA funds would, would be 150,000 of that.
Oh, okay.
And 15,000, we would, if there's no place else in the budget, we would look at EDA funds again.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood what you said. Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are we looking at this like if, okay, like on our street, there's only one person that's being serviced? Is that because he has a business? Would that be it? If someone has businesses, 8769-201st, that's practically across the street, I think that's Thompson's. I'm not positive.
Actually, no, it should be, you should be on there. Your neighbors on your side should be. I'm looking at the map.
I thought maybe just they picked, just the people at businesses because the need was greater.
No.
Okay, just questioning.
No, it was, it was all the homes in that geographic area. So if you look at the list of homes...
Yeah, I just was looking at the list.
You should be right here. It's 201st.
Yeah.
For all of those. Either side of you, the Stadien Church.
Sure, I get it.
And Thompson's over there.
Yeah. Okay.
We, I specifically asked on Engen if they could go up to 204th and Engen. There are two homes there that have been, one in particular is Mayor Westing. And they said if they get the grant, they would see what they could do to actually go up to the two homes on Engen as well. But right now, that wasn't in the original study, so. They'd have to have the infrastructure go all the way down 201st to Engen and all the way up Engen to 230th, so. But if they, if they get the grant, they would see if they could do that, no additional cost.
Agreed.
But this would cover everything from the Stadien Lutheran Church to our western border and everything from 22 up to... 205th, it looks like. Actually, 211.
This is it?
At this point, it's a total of 81 homes.
And all these, all the industry.
Industry is already covered at no extra cost. So all of the commercial district, if, if the businesses want it, can have it. That was covered at no extra cost. They, they bumped that on to the first project that they did, phase one and phase two, south of 22. Saying from Burns Parkway over to the western border, from 181st up to 22. And then they covered the industrial park, commercial area, and the city hall at no additional infrastructure cost.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2022-XX, authorizing the submission of a border-to-border grant application to extend broadband to serve an additional 85 homes in the Twin Lakes area of Now Then, with understanding that there is no guarantee that Arvig and the city will be successful in obtaining this grant.
And just a clarification, the actual number's 81.
Eighty-one, excuse me.
So it's 81, not 85?
Correct.
Okay, so the application is right with the 81.
Yeah. All right, we have a second, or a motion from Councilmember Rainville?
A seconded.
Seconded from Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion?
So if we don't get the grant, we're not going to be able to move forward, correct?
Not with the border-to-border grant. We still have the 150,000. We'll be back to square one on where to go from here.
Part of fun, man. If it's, if we don't get the grant, it's still 550 grand.
Correct.
So we got to have a bake sale for the other...
At least.
400.
It's baking all day today. I'll just keep baking.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Saying in hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item C, approval of resolution naming the Now Then city administrator and authorizing mayor to execute employment agreement on behalf of the city. I don't believe we had a final agreed-upon contract. We would like to get Mr. Lehner in by August 1st. But short of the, going over the details of that contract, I would request that it is a standard template that's used by the League of Minnesota Cities. They provided the template. Request would be that the council would authorize, Councilmember Blake and myself as a hiring committee to work with Frank and DDA and the attorney and Mr. Lehner to come up to satisfy the final language.
Perfect.
And then on that approval, we could sign it and he could start next Monday. So if that's okay with the council, I will accept a motion accordingly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022-Yet To Be Named, naming Scott Lehner the Now Then city administrator effective August 1st, 2022, and authorizing the mayor to execute unemployment agreement on behalf of the city.
Motion, Councilmember Greenberg? We have a second.
Second?
Second from Councilmember Rainville. Any other discussion?
So what are the final details? Are, are you two going to be negotiating salary, or is that...
Salary is set at $97,000.
Okay.
It has to do with length of the contract, the renewal opportunities there, and the vacation. So there was some miscommunication on vacation going backwards after the first year, which...
Okay.
I think it was just miscommunication at this point. And I don't, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at what you got late in the day, based on what you told me back there, but it sounds like that's the primary points that you brought up to me.
I understand that was the primary.
Okay, so that's, the salary's been set and agreed upon?
Yes.
It's, it really has to do with vacation and renewal. There would be a, my understanding of the draft, there would be a, like any other employees, a six-month review, and then an annual review and adjustments accordingly. Sounded like all the other conditions that apply to all of other staff would apply to this contract. Right? I got that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So... Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Saying in hearing none, all those that approve, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
So now we have... The budget. And Lori has been working with staff on that. So what you have before you is, is the first council draft. Our opportunity tonight, now Joel, are you going to have to leave early tonight?
Yeah. I'd say about 20 after.
Okay.
It's only a half hour.
So if there's something in particular that's on the budget you want to make sure we cover, let's get that before you leave. But what you have here is a, obviously a summary of the proposed changes on the first page. You have a general fund budget summary. You have a projection of if we go in at what we're at right now, what, what that would mean for a levy increase, tax scenarios, and then the budget categories as proposed. And what chance people had to, to look at this, but this will be an opportunity to, I'm assuming, a fairly high level at this point, to get the general concept of what it is we want to do, equipment-wise, personnel-wise, those types of things, some of the big ticket items. And they can see where our costs have gone up, or our revenues have gone up, or vice versa. If you want to take a look at the first page, the 23 budget changes. Intergovernmental revenue went down $31,000. Levy proposal would be up 65.5. And some of these charges for services are really, in effect, pass-throughs, but more activity, the more we charge, the more we pay out. We're hoping that interest rates stay up. Right now, feels kind of like the Magic 8-Ball.
Yes.
But right now, we're projecting that revenue, the interest revenues will be up. So net revenue on change would be about $93,000 increase. Now, the intergovernmental, is there anything if, if the legislature decides to come back and actually have a special session?
You know, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is preliminary. I, I haven't gotten a final number yet from the League of Minnesota Cities or from the Department of Revenue. So it's based on estimated what you're going to get in, in 2023.
The problem there is, they can't give you anything because the legislature didn't finish their business.
Right.
So right now, nobody's getting local government aid.
Exactly.
And, and I got to believe they're going to be screaming because for some cities, that's literally millions.
Oh, definitely. And, and in your city, it's about 20-some thousand dollars, so it's not make or break. So, but it, it could change. And we have plenty of time. We have till the middle of September or the beginning of September to find out what's going on. So the entire month of August is still available for them to do a special session.
The over, over-under on it by those that know are, nothing happened before the primaries. After the primaries, when people know if they're in or out, they may allow for a special session.
Okay.
They may have to have a special session just because of what they did on THC.
Okay.
And so they would probably try and combine things.
Sure.
But we won't really know anything till after the primaries, is what people are guessing, so.
All right.
All right, expenditures. Right now, bottom line is $325,000 increase in expenditures. We've talked about additional positions in administration, at least have a placeholder in there for that. Obviously, supplies, if you can get them, are much more expensive. Internet, gas, and utilities are more expensive. Salt, chemicals, and street maintenance are way up. Law enforcement contract is up. Fire contract is the agreed-upon increase. This is the third year of our fire contracts, so. Building inspector has increased some fees, cost for services. Legal, both civil and prosecuting are raising their rates. Finance, we're switching to a different audit firm this year and anticipate that to be significantly more than we paid in the past. Engineering, we do have a potential road projects for next year. Capital outlay, we have some equipment. If we have new office employee, we will need a computer and some work there. We, last year, we were proposing a contingency of 15,000. This year, we're looking at contingency of 10,000 and a small transfer out to the building capital fund.
That's the increase in the, in the transfer out. The actual transfer is larger than that. So that's just the change. All this reflects changes, not totals. Okay.
Yeah, if it was only 325, I'd be... I should have made that clear. These are increases.
Yes.
And obviously, if it's in parentheses, that's a decrease, so. Everything in the expenditures there was an increase. Everything was an increase in revenue except for the intergovernmental state aid. So the proposed budget changes and... Other funds, what, what do you have there, Lori?
So it's the debt service funds and your capital project funds and your equipment replacement fund. So the levy for debt service is going up from last year by $53,700. Special assessments, the, the estimates are going down from what we originally budgeted for, for special assessments.
Is that because of, partly because of the prepay?
Yes, it could be because of prepaids, or it could be primarily, probably because of prepaids on the low end.
We have a significant amount of prepay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, it is, it was, we budgeted $78,500 last year, but we got $190,000 of prepaids in '21. And so the actual projected is only 60,500 that you'll get every year for the 2021 A improvement bonds. So it's a, a decrease in, in those special assessments going forward because you got so much money upfront. The projected actual in, in county recycling is, is going up substantially. I talked with the county, and I understand now what it is that they, they have for the city of, of Now Then. And we basically, you basically get $50,000 a year from them. There's a small portion that you have to apply for, but you normally always get it. And so, and, and it's kind of, regardless if you do the special projects, it's almost like you get it anyway just because you have a recycling...
Center.
Center here in Now Then. And so the county is much more supportive of Now Then than they are of, say, other cities that don't have their own recycling centers. So...
So there was, so last year, we went through the, the formula, and I think our liaison, Councilmember Rainville's going to work with Adrian tomorrow on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Last year, it seemed like there might be some money left on the table. We didn't realize when we were adding features, whether it be styrofoam or
Right.
Plastics, or plastic bags, or some of those things, that actually qualified us for some more on their formula.
Right.
So we'll, we'll make sure that we qualify for everything that we can on the formula, any special grants. The other thing that, as a council, we wanna always be aware of is having projects in hand, as in last year, when the extra ten-thousand dollars came available, we had a project we could apply it to. It's happened a few times where they've had money remaining in their account, and they tell the cities, if you're ready with something, it's here for you. So we always wanna have everything we qualify for and something else in the docket, on the docket, to, to apply money late in the year
Right.
that comes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, she explained to me that usually by, at the end of the year, they find that not all the cities have gotten all of their money that they had set aside for them, and so then they reallocate, basically, and you're available, it's available to you to, to apply for. So you get a, a five dollars per household, um, plus ten-thousand dollars, and then you get ten-thousand for a drop-off center. You get a certain amount for organics, and then you have twenty-thousand as a grant program, and you can apply for those funds. So the total is fifty-thousand-two-sixty. And then plus, if there's anything remaining, you can always apply for those funds, so. So the recycling fund looks a lot better than it did when I first did this, so.
So our, our discussion the other day of losing forty-thousand dollars doesn't look so.
That does not exist anymore.
All right, good. All right, um, so then you got other revenues you got?
Um, transfers in, uh, from the general fund and, and the equipment fund, so we're transferring money from the equipment fund to debt service, and then we're also transferring money from the general fund to a capital project fund for the well, is what we're, we're doing in, in 2022. So.
And that's, that's the, the fire department well?
Yes, I believe so, it's a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
Yep.
And so the, on the expenditure side, increasing our hours that we're actually spending, we did not budget for, for thirty hours a week there. I did put some of this time in the park fund, some of the recycling, so I didn't put all thirty hours in here. Let me look and see what I did. Cause we had talked about that, that possibly this person would not only work at recycling, but also at the parks department and, and help out there. So, um, oh, no, I did, no, I didn't, okay, so I put eighty percent of their time in recycling and twenty percent of their time in parks.
And, and did you include Adrian's hours?
Yes, I did, I put Adrian in, in here. I, I used twenty percent of Adrian's time in recycling, and then eighty percent in administration. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but.
Probably a little on Adrian, but we can. It's a start.
It's a start, yes.
Yeah, cause anyway, we, we weren't including it at all prior, previously.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, debt service?
I believe, just for the grant application, or for the, the first half of the year, I believe we, she did fifty-fifty. And I don't know if that makes a difference.
Oh.
Because she spends quite a bit of time on the recycling, not only with the residents coming in to pay for the recycling, but the reporting and keeping track of what Kelly's doing.
Yep, and that does make a difference, so.
So, yeah, so I believe on the grant application, she used a fifty-fifty.
Okay.
And I think that's what we had briefly discussed before, that she's probably about fifty percent there.
Okay. I commodified that budget to reflect that.
Yeah, and, and I know that.
So what will it do, it'll, it'll reduce the expenditures in the general fund, and it'll increase your expenditures in the recycling fund. And so it will show a larger loss there, unless I can contact the county and find out.
Actually, the county contacted us today.
Okay.
Sudal was out today, but she's gonna call tomorrow.
Okay.
My understanding is correct.
And she's saying, we have one of the better programs, paraphrase, and we should not be losing money, she's gonna work with us to make sure that
Perfect, perfect.
we're not operating a loss.
Okay, that's good to know, cause then, then that will help, I'll, I'll change that general fund budget.
And we, and we have to take a look at, you know, one of the things we wanna do is, is see how, make sure we're breaking even, but with fuel costs going up, hauling costs could be going up.
Right.
Revenue from recycled materials could be going down, so we, we need to look at that balance.
Sure.
And work with the county, saying, if this is gonna be the case, how do we make sure we at least break even?
Sure.
The other thing that, that we had talked about is having, uh, staff monitor who's using recycling, because we could be subsidizing a lot of other cities. So we're not charging anybody to come there, but we'd at least like to know, are you actually a now-then resident?
Sure.
Cause if, if we're not gonna break even on it, we need to make sure that, first and foremost, we're taking care of now-then residents. And if there's, if we need to subsidize that with non-residents, then we have to get something from non-residents.
Right. Okay, good news, so I'll, I'll modify that. Um, the debt service, the new debt service payment is higher than last year's, so that'll be implemented in twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-three. Um, we've got less park projects that we're budgeting for twenty-three, and we have a smaller street improvement project. Uh, we do have a new well, and we have less equipment that we're purchasing in twenty-three. We, we had lots of the equipment purchases in twenty-two for the, the fire station and, and the fire department.
On that new well, you've got it at ninety-five, what is that?
That's an increase over last year's budget.
Cause we had the seventy last year.
Yeah, we had seventy, uh, in there last year, I believe we're seventy-five.
So the new well is one-seventy-five?
So no, if, you know, if you wanna look at the actual budget, so these are all just changes. So the actual budgets are further down on a, on a different page, if we wanna go to the detail, then we can talk about.
We'll get to that, but to answer a question, last year, the guestimate was, two years ago, actually, seventy thousand.
Yeah.
That's one-seventy-five.
And the latest quote from Trout and Renner are closer to one-seventy-five.
Wow.
Pipe has gone through the roof, uh, fuel's gone through the roof, labor's getting more difficult to find, uh, so their costs are higher. What we were looking at, this well out here being replaced at fifteen thousand was coming in at forty-eight. We may have reduced that today by locating the well differently, but we'll find out when we get the next bid in. All right, any questions on this page before we flip?
All right, page three is just a general fund summary page also. Kinda gives you, uh, the differences between, um, the twenty-two budget and the twenty-three budget. And maybe I just would like to point out that you're using some fund balance, if you look at the, at the bottom of page three, you're using two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-forty-five of the money that you have collected, basically, from ARPA funds. Now, I did not include, you mentioned that you were gonna spend a hundred-and-fifty thousand of those dollars?
Separate. So those are, those are funds that we don't have.
Oh, okay.
So the ARPA funds, we got two-fifty-one last year, we got two-fifty-one
This year?
Any, any week now.
Okay.
But the hundred-and-fifty is under qualifying program.
Addition, okay.
So it's not, it's not here unless we apply for it.
Perfect, thank you.
But they, they allocated for it at the county.
Okay.
So it's not in the budget.
Thank you. So this is just a summary, you know, by, you know, salaries, materials, printing, and so forth. I don't know if anybody has any questions on this, the detail is in the following spreadsheets. Page four is actually showing you what, an emboldened letter, emboldened there, the twenty-two, twenty-three levy is projected to go up six-point-nine percent with the current levy amounts that we have projected. So the debt levy is a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, and the, um, general fund levy is, um, one-million-seven-zero-two-nine-zero-five. So it's a six-point-four percent increase, six-point-nine-four percent increase over last year. The other ones are just projections, I like to, to go out a ways, so you can kinda see what is coming down the road, especially with the debt levies changing and things like that, so.
Wow.
Questions on page four?
And then page five is the residential city tax scenario, there's, um, with the, the current situation, you know, I haven't gotten all the numbers for calculating, um, the, the taxes payable, but I'm projecting about uh, anywhere from two to three, three-and-a-half percent increase for properties in their taxes payable. So currently there, you can see the monthly city tax examples down on the bottom, and they would go up, you know, by a dollar, or four dollars, or, or five dollars, depending on the value of your home, the value of your property. So I did contact the state, because there was, strangely enough, um, a huge change in some of the personal property here in, in now-then, as far as the, um, values. And I found out there was one property that was valued, it was valued at six-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars, and it went up to eleven-million-eight-hundred, and I thought, this is not right.
Well, that was when they put in the swimming pool, I bet you.
So anyway, I have a call-in to the state, I, I called the county first, and they told me exactly what the property, properties were that, that these changes occurred on, there was a couple of them that went up more than double what their original values were, so. They said the state actually assigns those values, and I have to call them, so I've gotta call into the state, I don't know when I will hear back from them. They actually are not working in the office, so I had to leave, I just had to email them, and hopefully, they'll get back to me before September, so.
What, what do you mean, who doesn't double-check that when you're going from six-hundred-thousand to eleven million?
Yeah, to, I have no idea, I was like shocked, I'm like, wow, so, and maybe they're looking at it themselves going, what happened? So.
I've seen some really, really nice homes and large properties in now-then.
It, it's a personal property, it's not even a residential, it's, I don't know what it is, but, um, yeah, for it to go, that changed that much, I was shocked. Yeah, it went from six-hundred-and-twenty-million to eleven-million-five-hundred-thousand, and paid twenty-two. I'm like, what?
Do you, do you know what property it is?
Yes, I do, I have the parcel, parcel, parcel number, um, but I just assume not saying anything until I find out what's going on here.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll see, I'm sure they'll get back to me. So that, that in itself will change. Yeah, that will change, if it's incorrect, it will change your overall tax rate, because that will impact the totals by eleven million, yeah. So that's why I'm saying this is preliminary, because I don't know what's gonna happen here.
So, so let's say that they, they realized they made an eleven-million-dollar mistake, or thereabouts, a ten-million-dollar mistake.
Right.
What, what would that do to us, just off the top of your head?
Your tax rate, or tax capacity rate, twenty-point-oh-six. Will go up. Not much, but it will go up a little. Whoops, there's a long number hanging on here. That's only four miles. There we go. Yeah, it'll go up, the rates will go up, because that value is overstated, and so because you're spreading your taxes across the values, when the values decrease, then the tax rate goes up, so you can collect the same amount of money.
All right. Any questions on page five? So if the taxable value is above five-hundred-thousand, then the, anything above five-hundred-thousand is one-point-two-five percent for tax purposes?
Yep.
Is there any other, are there any other breakpoints as you get higher?
No.
Like eleven million dollars?
Nope, that's it.
Well, that's, that's one small blessing.
Yes, yeah, that was one.
All right, page six?
Yeah, it's just another way of looking at it, so, I, I'm showing you several different ways to look at what's going on. This is, just shows you, your general government's going up thirty percent, your public works are going up about twenty-five percent. Um, public safety's only going up three percent, and your parks and rec is going up about eight percent, so, um, in, in, over last year, as far as expenditures go.
So public safety, even with the, the three percent on the fire and the increase on the law enforcement?
Right, it's still only three, three-point-two-nine.
Yeah, but if we go down to the individual, like sheriff's contract, it's went up a hundred-and-sixty-four percent in two years. And the fire has went up
Right.
sixty-seven thousand in two years. So.
That is true.
So that dilutes it a little bit when it's thrown in there with everything.
Because they went up in twenty-two, they didn't go up in twenty-three. But twenty-two is when you saw the large increases.
Right.
This year.
We're just projecting to twenty-three, though, I mean, we could have another big increase, we don't know, right?
No, that's, this is the number they proposed.
This is the proposed number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're saying the contract went in like halfway through twenty-two, right, so it's a full year next year.
Oh, that's right, we were only gonna do a half-year, that's right.
So, but I mean, what we're used to is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, now it's four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand for sheriff's contract.
No, we, we budgeted three-seventy-three last year, we used three-twenty-four.
Yeah, I realize that, but I'm just, I mean, if we look at where we've been, I mean, we're, we're spending more than we're taking in if we look at this year's proposal. And we've been, if we go back to like twenty-one, we had an excess of seven-hundred grand. Last year, we, this year, we're projecting to eat into most of that, and we're gonna be upside down projecting into twenty-twenty-three. So if we start looking what's changed a lot in the last couple of years, it's the fire department, it's the sheriff, and it's what we're proposing for our own management team. And there's been a ton of increases with the services, because we've said fuels went up, salt has went up, all of that stuff.
Mm-hmm. And you actually have, you have, I'm projecting that you're gonna have three-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand in additional, um, fund balance revenues. Your, your fund balance is gonna be almost ninety percent, so your, your expenditures to fund balance will be almost ninety percent at the end of twenty-two, which is really high. You wanna, you wanna use some fund balance, either by transfers to other funds, or utilizing some of these, this, these dollars for expenditures, so that you can get your fund balance back down to a more reasonable level. You really wanna be fifty percent or less, because what, what Because what what the state auditors and everybody looks at is that you you should be anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of your your general fund balance to your your expenditures. And right now, you're almost at ninety percent. So in other words, you've got a lot of money in the bank, a lot of money in savings because of those two, two years of grants, this year and last year, where you got a lot of money.
So does that include the ARPA funds?
Yes, it does.
So that's that's artificial.
It is, but I mean, they're still in the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so you want to utilize.
It's not gonna carry over.
No, but you do wanna get it down from ninety down to something. So that's why we're proposing or that, I'm proposing that you use two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of your fund balance to support your operations in twenty-three. And that will be just like a one, one-year thing, and you're not gonna continue to do that year after year after year. You probably will still use some fund balance in twenty-four. As far as, you know, my projections out there. You know, you you could use some fund balance in twenty-four and still be above, above the the fifty percent. You don't get below fifty percent until twenty twenty-six. According to what I'm projecting out, so. So you'll use a little bit of fund balance in twenty-four, a little bit of fund balance in twenty-five. And then in in twenty-six, you know, you won't use hardly any. Twenty-seven, then you're you're back to normal.
The use of two hundred and thirty in twenty-three.
Yes, in twenty-three, yeah.
Is that still leaving us with a ninety?
No, that won't get you down to sixty-five.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, so if I look at the bottom line on page three, that's the, that's the percentages you're talking, right? So fund balance, if we go back on page three.
Yes, yep, yep.
You're one, two, a million two in twenty-one, which is seventy-nine percent, then we go.
To ninety, ninety-two percent, and and that's just a projection, you know. It that definitely could change because that's, I'm using only figures through June thirtieth. And then my, it's a projection to be at sixty-six percent basically by the end of twenty-three. And that's if you spend all your money and you get all your money in, so.
And we've always been on the higher end of the fund balance. We know it's fifty, twenty-five to fifty percent. We've always been closer to sixty, sixty-five.
If I look back here, you've even been at the hundred percent mark back in twenty fifteen.
When that was brought to our attention, we we did some transfers.
And then in twenty eighteen, you went down to fifty-two. Nineteen, you were forty-four. Twenty, you were forty-four, and now you're creeping back up. Twenty-one, you're seventy-nine. Twenty-two, you're ninety-two. So now we're just gonna adjust you back down again. It's okay. It's better to have that as a problem than the other way around, so. This is, this too is fixed.
Other, no Grove, there's a lot of communities in Nova County that would love to have that challenge.
Yes, yes.
I was gonna say, why do they do that as a problem? Because it's it's cash that we have available.
Right, but they don't want you to, so they don't do it as a problem, but they think that you perhaps are overtaxing your residents because you're not spending what you're levying for. And that's what, that's what it is. So they want you to have fifty percent of your cash available because you don't get your taxes in until June or July of of the year. So you need some money in the bank to pay for your expenses January through June. And and so that's what that fifty percent is.
Okay.
And so they they look at it and say, well, you're not, you're levying too much money, you're not spending what you're budgeting, and 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 and, you know, what happened is that you got some money that you weren't anticipating, and and now you can utilize those funds going forward. I mean, we, you said that you used that to, for public safety, I believe, is what your resolution. I don't know if you've done a resolution this this year yet for the new ARPA funds. Yeah.
I thought that resolution covered both twenty-two and twenty-three.
I I have no idea. I don't, I'll have to look at that and make sure. So. So it's not a bad, bad problem to have. Because in twenty twenty, you were down to forty-four percent, so. Uh, let's see, so, on page seven, this is another way to look at it. It's more of a detail by department kind, but just giving you broad, you know, salaries and materials and things like that.
And what's in salaries and benefit that it's up one hundred and forty thousand from twenty twenty?
Okay, and so that is the new employees that that you have in your administration department. It includes Natalie at thirty-six hours. It includes Adrian. Now I'm gonna change her because I had eighty percent of her here, so it's gonna be fifty. So that will go down a little, um, because I'm gonna put fifty percent in recycling. So that that's gonna make a change here in the general fund. Um, we have a new position called an administrative deputy clerk at thirty-six hours. And then you have a new city administrator. So and that all adds up to the hundred and some thousand dollars over the previous year. And maybe Frank could argue for the position that that we're looking at, or?
Shall I, right now, or?
I don't understand. I'm confused here now.
So there's a, there's a, an administrative assist, there's two new positions.
You're talking about Natalie and?
There's Nat, no, and then there's an op, there's an open position which is new. It's called administrative deputy clerk, and it's, there's no one in that position right now. And that is a new position, and it's thirty-six hours a week. So it would be like working side by side with Natalie, only doing more of the administrative type things rather than the finance things. So you'll have four people in administration then. Or actually, three and a half, because Adrian will only be half-time. And then there's also a temporary position there for the summers, I believe.
Lisa.
Yeah, the temporary position is intended to finish scanning. What Lisa's coming to do. But that, that is something that tends to pile up. It's what Lisa was doing.
It's what she was doing. It's not that.
She had volunteered to do forty hours to help train someone to do that?
When she was here employed, that's what she was doing. And that's why she would volunteer to train, because that's what she was doing, and she wants to make sure it's done right.
So this is just, at this point, it's an ask. We have a.
Yes, it's an ask. There's a new position that that's an ask.
And that position is valued at what, on a yearly basis?
It's a hundred and five thousand total. That includes medical and FICA and para.
And this is gonna be presented to the council later. Is this the deal?
I don't know.
Yeah, it would have to be approved on by the council.
Right.
Right now, we're we're putting in numbers for budgetary purposes to see what works.
I see. Okay.
So we tried, was what we're trying to do last summer, saying what what does it look like the staffing needs to be so that we can put together a budget and see if that's reasonable. Based on nine months of learning, this has been the recommendation, that there needs to be additional staff.
So we believe we need another full-time person beyond what's there right now, plus another.
It's a, it's a thirty-six hour position, but it's full-time, yeah, yeah.
Plus another part-time help in the summer.
Right, in the summer. That's twelve thousand dollars. So that is one.
And then that, and that may or may not be, you know, right now, that's to get the records caught up because everything is.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, it's doubled in two years.
Well, you recall, we had a four-page memorandum that identified sub-seventeen things that were either not getting done and were getting done.
Yeah, I realized that, and we paid some professional fees to close the gap on some of that stuff, too.
Sure, what we'd like to do is have people on staff rather than consultants necessarily. That doesn't mean we cut out consultants totally. I can tell you, for example, from my experience, I spend the vast majority of my time preparing for city council meetings. And that's good, because that's exactly what the job is. But if it's an opportunity cost issue. So your new administrator's going to come in here, and that's what he should be spending his time on. But that's not all there is to do. There's, you need some assistance to be able to put together the the documentation, to do the research, to get the information you're looking for to start new programs or end programs, or develop the city in general. It also gives your administrator the time to work with the community. You've not had that before. There's a reason for it. There simply is not enough time between the internal work and the external work. Moreover, Natalie is, I can tell you, fully up to here, especially right now with the elections. But, you know, that's not the only thing.
It doesn't fly.
I can imagine.
Yeah.
And we'll certainly be, we'll put together a better preparation, presentation for you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at what the changes are, because this is the first time, at least, I mean, going back a couple of years, where we don't have enough revenue to cover our expenses without dipping into savings, which is not solvent.
But it's recommended, remember? I recommend it.
I get that.
Okay. Because you need to get it out of the general fund somehow.
Yeah, I I look at that, but also we just voted on a, on this internet thing where if we don't get the grant, there's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we have to, we'd have to find it someplace.
Sure.
So we could use it there and still provide services to eighty-one homes.
Yeah.
But we, so it's all, it's, it's all choices, right?
Yes, it is.
So I'm just looking at, like, we're crossing into this area where we are spending more than we're making, which typically doesn't go well.
No, not in the long run.
Exactly.
And you can do it in the short term.
But what we're proposing is not one-year changes. We're proposing fundamental changes to headcount, which is a year-over-year increase.
Yes, it is.
And again, the.
Or fundamental changes to safety or fire, which, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't have done what we did with the sheriff's department. We didn't have a ton of choice, but at the end of the day, it still was a huge change to our cost structure. And the fire department was a lot of great things. It was still a change to our cost structure.
Yes, it is.
And 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 again, in in context, the option was to stay with Ramsey on a contract that was two and a half times what we paid in St. Francis.
I didn't say it was the wrong decision. I'm just saying, when you look at fundamentally our costs from a couple of years ago to where we are today, our our overall property taxes have not changed significantly in the last few years. Our intergovernmental funds, we don't have those, so that's down. And our costs, we put in structural changes to our costs that have brought us to a point where we're upside down on our checking account versus our expenses.
And the intergovernmental, we we don't know if the legislature will get back and do their job or not, so that's, that's, that's here. We don't know for certain. We're just counting on it, because we can't count on them to get back to the table and finish their work.
Right.
And and there certainly are some that if the economy and the supplies keep going as they are, there will have to be adjustments. If we're told that it's all gonna get better real soon, then some of these costs don't stand where they're at. But you're right about, as we're adding staff, and this was the discussion that we had last year, and the discussion that obviously came to the forefront when we looked at how overwhelmed staff was in getting things done, especially during an election year. It's it's so much more significant in an election year, so.
Yeah, true.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Rainville.
Also, in our conversations last year, is we were going to put in a, or we were asked to put in a full-time position in administration. So had we done that, had things not occurred the way they occurred, and had we done that, that position would have already been in here. So we would have had that under, a year of it under our belt. The other thing I would ask is so, and, you know, wages go up. The medical, Natalie, we got in a bid or a rebid on our medical, and what is that going up for twenty twenty-three?
They're anticipating ten percent, and that is included in the budget.
Okay.
And we won't get final numbers, though, until after our budget is submitted. So that was the estimate that Bill had thought it would be. He thought that we, the cities would follow what the school systems are doing. He thinks it's about ten percent.
And the other thing that we found in that list of seventeen is that we weren't tracking para contributions. So I know that our para contributions are much higher than they were in the previous years, but should have been in the previous year, so we're doing some catch-up there.
That is correct. And Mr. Mayor, may I just say something to council about it? Adrian and I and Frank are overwhelmed. You know, I I totally, fully agree that your previous staff was one hundred percent overwhelmed. I think I had eleven, almost twelve hours of overtime on the last pay period. I can't keep up this kind of schedule. I know Adrian asked today if she could have overtime because stuff is just falling behind. You know, if I can get, it it will help to have seasonal help in to get the property files all electronic. It would be a hundred times easier when someone's calling in for septic design to click, 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 rather than have to go dig it out and find it. But there's potentially even more hours than what was approved at the last meeting to get that scanning done and that back room cleaned up. You know, would you agree, Scott, just because you had seen that back room?
I've seen the back room. It does give you more.
Yeah. Do do I think that a seasonal help next year, if we have that administrative other position? I don't think we'd need the seasonal help in the office, but what we found is a storm came through. Roofing permits are through the roof. You know, literally, through the roof. You know, we can't, it's just, it's extremely difficult to get through a day. Neither one of us, we rarely get a lunch. Frank never takes a lunch. We work straight through. And I just, I'm gonna tell you right now, I can't keep up this kind of a schedule.
Senator, and, and, Councilwoman Rollers, I didn't hear you arguing with it. You're just saying, please note that something's gonna have to change, and and it's gonna be taxes, it's gonna, the revenue has to come in somewhere.
Something has to change to be able to pay for it.
And and we just need to make sure what we're doing here is most expedient, most efficient, but most effective. And 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 if that affects the budget, that affects the budget. But right now, nobody saw tsunami and and financial hit that people are taking right now, whether it's the the road supplies, the fuel, and and correct me, you're looking at a number of things to try and control some of those costs, whether it's bulk buying, whether it's, you know, what kind of discounts you can get. You're looking at what you can do from a payroll standpoint to try and control costs. So you're looking not to just say, put your head down and just make it work. You're saying, what else can we do to be more efficient?
Correct.
And cost-effective. But right now, and and I agree, I've got friends that are that are appraisers, and they just can't keep up with all the storm damage and things that are going on. It's it's a perfect storm right now between the 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 extra demand. I, when I was in signing papers today, I couldn't believe all the calls and people in on recycling. If if we can't fund recycling, I, you know, I talked to the council about equipment, because
Yeah, I agree.
It's it's taken an awful lot of resources. And if it's fundable, then we have to show that. And if we're gonna subsidize it, and we're gonna subsidize people outside the city, I I was amazed that there were more calls in there even than for building permits today. And it was just in the time I was signing papers.
And Monday is slow. And Monday is slow.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just so you know that every $50,000 of new levy that I add to your existing levy is basically a 3% increase. So if I moved your, if, so instead of using $231,000, excuse me, in, in fund balance, if I added $50,000 to your levy, it would make it a 7% increase in your levy. And, but you'd only use 181,000 instead of 231. And that, what it does to your total levy is it moves it from the 6.94 to the 9.84 increase in a levy. And, and so I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that, is it, the levy that's proposed is adjustable, is changeable, if you decide to levy for, for more of your expenditures. So should we move on from administration?
Sure.
Okay. And there, and there's $5,000 in there for, for an office too, for that extra person, so.
Which, which I believe was already taken care of.
Oh, okay.
Because that's getting installed tomorrow for the part-time person. So if we had a permanent person, they would take over that place, so that might be able to adjust a little.
Okay, okay. Elections, there will not be one next year that I'm aware of.
Hopefully.
And then, in the finance area, it's, it's actually charges from me and your new auditors, and then also the assessing. Assessing probably won't go up. I do have a call into the county to see what they would charge you for assessing services, but I haven't heard back from them yet, to just, to compare it, to see if it's reasonable or not. So, and I don't know, you know, with your new city administrator, he may have more accounting experience than previous people, so maybe my services won't be as needed. I, I just don't know until we get there, so.
And again, part of, part of the opportunity here tonight is to run through it, have people highlight areas they want to investigate more and discuss further.
Yep, yep, yes, we're not done, we have the entire month of August and even a couple of weeks into September to, to redo numbers.
This is the first shot saying, we think this, if there's something that could be tightened up, like Natalie said, on the office supply.
Yeah.
You know, looking at the last one, you know, I, I highlight things I go through and say, okay, why are we wherever at, we can ask those questions.
Yeah.
If it says, because what you've been doing in the past wasn't working for this reason, or we want a little more cushion, then we can discuss those things in more detail.
So then when we move down to the attorney, we just got a bill from the attorney for the first five months, and so, and it was $20,000, so that, the prosecuting attorney charges have gone up substantially from previous, and I, I don't, I think it's the new attorney that, that you're using?
No, it's, it's, it's the same attorney, he's, he's with a new firm and they have a different accounting firm.
Okay.
They just never thought it was important to bill for six months, so.
Okay.
So I, I believe that's actually January through June.
I believe so, I didn't look.
I think it was January through May.
Was it? Yeah, I didn't look at it so closely yet, I just forwarded it to you quick, I didn't have a chance.
Yes, happy.
Did it go through June or May? May and May.
Yeah, it's through May.
Yeah. So anyway, I, I increased the, the prosecuting budget to 40,000, not knowing if this is kind of a blip, you know, of, you know, projecting $50,000, and then increased.
And just, just along those lines, it's pretty hard to evaluate.
Right.
What they're doing when you don't see anything for five months and you get this and it's like, okay, we know the charges went up, but the other portion that we don't know is, is what type of fines or revenue.
Well, and I can tell you, your revenues have not increased like that.
Right.
Yeah, so in fact.
So we have to, we have to decide, is this the type of, are we just stuck with this much prosecution, is, is he?
Overbilling?
As, as we had said before, it seems like the same names keep coming up here. If you just continue cases instead of closing cases, maybe some of these things, as a city, we don't want to say, close the cases and, and quit carrying hundreds of dollars every month on the same.
Right. I don't know, you'll have to contact them.
But, but that's one that we have to figure out. Again, it's hard to evaluate what we're getting for it when you don't see anything for five months, so.
Who is he?
Kurt Glazer, our prosecuting attorney.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
He was in here a couple of months ago.
Yeah, yeah, I remember now.
And his rates have gone up.
Well, you know, 21 actual was less than $15,000, 20 was only $35,000, so for it to go up to 50, I'm like, what is going on? I don't know, so anyway. Yeah, that might be something Scott looks into when he starts. Okay. And then general government is just really, you know, running at the buildings, you know, what, you know, all your utilities and, and any repair that's done. And, and really only, it's a very small change there, so. We can look at the detail that is associated with any of these too. Engineering and protecting, you know, I, we really need to look at that. Natalie and I need to do some analysis and, and make sure that the engineering fees that are associated with the boat improvements and stuff are going into the street renewal fund and not going into the general fund, I think there could be some.
Yeah, I would defer that there'll be some changes there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, because when we were sending those last round of checks, that question came up, that, is this going against the bond, is this going against the improvement fund?
Right, and I can tell you for the first half of the year, I just put it all, all under professional fees.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I.
So we'll take a look at it.
Can we clean that up?
Yep, that's something that we're going to work on on Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Okay.
So. And then fire management.
And so, so with that, do you, do you think that would adjust these numbers at all, projected?
The projected numbers, yes, definitely, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
For engineering, but if I look back to 20 and 21, it's like right in line with those.
Right, it's been at 47,000, so I think that it's a good budget number, yeah, yeah.
And 22 projected is gonna.
Is kind of high, but that's because we have some other stuff. Yep, yep. But it's still, I think 47 is still a good budget number for engineering. Because historically, that's what you'd spend.
I think historically though, it's all been put under professional fees.
Nope, nope.
You guys might have moved it then, because when I went back.
Nope, it's always been.
Under the fund?
Under, under the correct funding.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Yep, because I did look at that detail. So. And then fire management, on page nine, the actual budget is going down $26,000 because of actual expenditures are not what, what they were originally projected. They, they don't have as, as many firefighters as they were thinking that they would be able to have. That's one of the things that are changing. And then their maintenance costs, I, I believe are, are going down there too. But we can look at the deep, like I said, this is in summary form, so I don't know exactly what it was that was changing. Public Works, the primarily is all of the, the salt and the chemicals that you're using there. Joe feels that he needs a lot more in the budget regarding those items because he ends up not buying it or not doing the, the work because he doesn't have budget for it. So.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
And I've not looked through pages 12 and on, but, or 11 and on, and maybe it is broken down.
Yep, it is broken down in.
By gravel.
Yep, yep.
Because, because what I don't want to have is staff telling residents, we can't do something because there aren't funds, and there were funds.
And it is broken down on page 17. It says winter salt and sand, gravel, rock, and calcium chloride.
Okay.
So we broke it out, and then we have crack filling and patchwork too, I broke out in there. Forgot to highlight that. On page 17.
Just don't want that to happen again.
Yep. So.
So we're increasing his?
Yes.
Okay.
By $91,000.
And I mean, even just this year, we had, we had 37 and it ended up being 46.
Right, right.
$50,000 for that. So the other thing with that, and I had sent this to Natalie a while ago, and if you haven't looked at it, I can understand why. I had a conversation with Public Works in St. Francis, and I think we need to do a better job of partnering with our surrounding communities that have like needs. They do calcium chloride on their roads, they even offer it to their residents. If they want to do their road, if it isn't on the schedule, they can pay to do their roads. But that's something we should look at going forward, to see how we can partner and if we can get a, a better bang for a dollar by doing that. Maybe we just hand it over to another municipality, they get a bigger, they have a larger, larger amount of roads and so get a better bid than we do. Because I know there's differences in the couple of years I look back between what St. Francis is paying and what we were paying for, for calcium, so.
Do you have any idea on other cities around this town, still?
There, there is, and I have to go back to the email, there's a consortium of cities that work together on that. So I, I will send that and send that to Scott too. I'm sorry.
I'd heard that at some of the mayor's gatherings, that some of those cities were working together on various roads.
Economy of skill, you have to know. I mean, you just, so, I will send that to Scott. Thank you.
Before we send too many things to Scott, let's get that contract signed.
That's true.
He's listening to this over here going, what am I getting into? You, you did say you watched our council meetings, didn't you?
And Natalie filled me in last week when I was in the office, so I wasn't surprised when I answered.
Okay, so let's, let's just jump right to the detail, how about that? On page 11. And I, I, you know, I, I just want to throw it out to you guys to, to let me know what you have questions about. And, and I, I can either address it tonight or I can check into it and get back to you at our next meeting that we're having, I think we have it scheduled for, a tentative schedule for the 15th of August.
All you say that is, do people have that? Do we have a tentative schedule for the 15th of August? Oh, boy, it's not a good day for me.
I have a 5:30.
Yes, I know, did I put it down?
It was on the list, right, Mary?
Yes.
Or councilman?
Monday, the 15th, I do have that.
5:30.
So any of these things that you'd like me to address or change or do something with, let me know and I, I will make those changes and, and bring it back on the 15th. So starting with the levy, are you happy, sad, where are we with the general fund levy? It's 4% here, but overall, it was 6.94% with the debt service included. And even with a 4% levy, we are utilizing fund balance, that's 231. So we're utilizing our savings. And really, the only big change in revenues is your, your tax levy. That's really the only item that, that we can change substantially. I did increase contributions and donations and that was, that's basically the hockey association of river hockey. So that's included now in your, in your general fund budget?
And that may be, there's been some discussion on the other charitable gambling in town, which we've been getting nothing from.
Right.
And we found out they changed organizations.
Oh.
I always thought that they needed some city approval to run charitable gambling in your city, and we didn't know they changed.
Okay.
So we went to the previous organization and they said, we don't do that anymore.
Okay.
And so we're going to follow up with the current.
Okay.
Organization, and so that may be, if, if they're doing anything close to the hockey association to get.
Sure.
At least 50% more or maybe 100% more that way.
Right, right. And I do have a list that I can send to the council in regards to what specifically you can use those funds for. So that'd be good for you to know. And you do use them, you can use them for public safety and stuff, so having it in your general fund is fine for, for it to be there.
So on the, say the plan check fee, if I'm still on page 11 here.
Uh huh.
Projecting 59.
Right.
Is this the portion the city retains after?
Yes.
A portion to the building official?
It's just, it's just the total. So right now, we're not, we are expensing it completely and we're revenueing everything. So you're seeing total costs. So the net, if you took the net of the, whatever we're paying for the, the planner and, and then you, you would see by the plan check fees whether or not it covers their costs. So if you go down. On page 15.
That's, that's on the revenue side, we're looking at.
Yeah, on the expenditure side, then there's 50, 52,000, so you're getting 59, you're probably netting $7,000 in revenues. Because you're paying out 52.
Yep.
Okay? And that would be the same with the builder and the building.
So the, the, the plan check fee is actually against the building official?
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which one is the, the planner fees then, is that?
34109.
Oh, okay, $40,000 then, all right. But you, for the building, you also had building permits, so it would be the 128 plus the, the 59, or 60, so it'd be 180, 190,000 in, in building. But there must be some planner revenues in, in with that money that you're getting. Because you're getting, so you get all your permit fees and all your plan check fees and your planner fees, all that offsets your planner and your builder, your building inspector.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
There, there are planning, planner fees that do go into the building piece of it because she has to verify things and she does the.
Right.
Certificate of occupancy and.
That's what I thought, yeah, so some of her.
There are some fees that, that we incur or the residents should incur.
Yeah.
I don't know how they're built into the permit fee.
A plan checking fee, that typically is what the.
That's just the builder, that's the state.
That's the building official.
Isn't that the state's to charge?
So the zoning and subdivision fees, there might be some of that that the planner picks up.
Yeah.
The plan check fee, to my knowledge, is all inspect.
That's, yeah, that's what they use when they're reviewing the plans.
And then planner, planning fees would be listed. So right now, we're projecting a revenue on the planner fees of $35,000 and we're looking at professional services in planning of $60,000.
But you said that the planner fees are actually with, for the building inspector?
No, plan, plan check fees.
Okay, so, but the planner fees, some of their costs are also associated with buildings. And so it, you, you almost have to add up, like, your building permits and, and your planning, plan check fee and your planner fees together, and then look off. And then look, offset it with your building inspector and your planner costs. So if you look at all of them, you are, you're ahead of the game. It's the one twenty-eight plus the sixty, so it'd be, say, one ninety plus forty is two thirty. And your, on your expenditure side, it is the planning fees of sixty thousand, where am I? Yeah, well, it's only fifty-three thousand when I'm projecting, plus the building inspection of a hundred and twenty. So you, you're collecting about two thirty, you're spending about one seventy. So you're netting about sixty thousand dollars.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
And what's not also included in that is staff time.
Right.
So where it looks like we're making all this money
Right, you're really not.
We're paying our staff to do the work.
Oh, yeah, yes, definitely. When we do report it to minspec, I believe the staff time is allocated in there too, so that you, because they don't want you to charge more than you're, than you're actually expensing either.
Yeah, this was, this was the whole housing first issue, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, so this would, would, would seem to make sense. Do we have any idea how much time, you know, again, you were talking about being buried with roof permits and siding permits through the storm damage. Do you guys track, as we projected Adrienne's fifty percent of her time is, is recycling? Do you have any idea how much of the office time is building related or planning related?
Well, in February, it wasn't very much. Last week, I spent at least two to two and a half hours a day doing just permits right away in the morning. And then I left anything that came in, in the afternoon for the next day because I had to allocate time to other things. So I would say, you know, I know it's the first thing she does in the morning and she tries to clean up the inbox, but I would say it's at least a couple hours a day.
Okay, so, and, and when I was in signing documents today and a number of PNC members came in looking for documents as well. So there's building related and there's planning and zoning related. Are you guys or is Adrienne preparing, who prepares the planning and zoning packets?
Liz usually.
Liz prepares them, we, we generally distribute them. We also do the minutes for them for PNC.
And so any other planning and zoning related activities that you guys are doing?
Yes, there is actually, it just occurred to me that you'll take action on something and that's kind of, that takes you up to a certain point. Then we, the findings of fact, that sort of thing have to be filled in, so we know who moved second and who voted plus or minus. Notary work that is done by us. And then just, Mary, you know what, what it's like to do the signatures. It's not a half day, but it's a fair amount of time.
So when we, we do the MyLars, who's doing that? Is that something Liz is producing or you guys produce it?
Once you've signed them and I notarize them, then Liz will take it over to get it recorded. But all of the pass-through billing, we do that.
But we don't create the MyLars. We receive them from others.
So, so what, what would make sense to me before the fifteenth, we've got a few weeks, not that you have a whole bunch of time to do things, but this is critical, I think, to getting this right for the next year. Because one of the things that, that people are complaining about, the permit fees, if we haven't truly been capturing the staff time for these things, this is also our time, opportunity to say, do we need to increase permit fees? Or the portion that we're allocating for the city staff to do it? Because right now, if we're looking at, you know, as Lori went through and combined these permits and surcharges and investigative fees, if that's all, or the majority of that's going to minspec or to the planner. And how do we identify? We get the reports from minspec, says, here's what I charged you and here's what I gave you. How do we make sure that's covering your cost in the city?
And
We do an analysis, yeah.
In my estimation, I would say it's probably not at this time because that storm went through. I mean, Adrienne has been issuing all of these, the roofing permits are just over the counter, so
They're not going to minspec.
That's a hundred percent ours, except it gets sent to minspec. They do the final inspection with the photos and such, but Adrienne is one of the
They're taking the ninety-five and we're getting nothing.
Right. And we're issuing them.
So, so to me, it would, it would make sense, this would be one area we might want to tighten up and say, are we covering our cost? Are we subsidizing? And to the benefit of obviously minspec and, and TPC.
Right.
You know, I don't think we cut back on what they're doing, but it may be that our fees aren't where they should be to cover the staff cost.
Correct.
So is, is there a way between now and the end of the first week of August that?
Let me see if we can do, what would be ideal, I think, would be to increase the counter issue permits? And the ones that we process from start to finish and just send them. That would make more sense to increase those because that's most, mostly our time. I could maybe find out how many of those we've issued since the beginning of the year. Would that make sense?
Yeah.
Just counter issues?
Because I, I don't think minspec's going to lower their ninety-five dollars
No, they're not.
to come out and take pictures and record everything, but, but if you guys are doing the work and we're not getting anything for it.
Right, well, they're doing
We need to cover it.
They are doing the inspection. I don't know what they charge for that when they look at the photos and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I'm saying that they, that's what they get their ninety-five dollars for.
Right, and the counter issues.
And I'm saying they probably won't lower that because they're saying, we're doing what we were doing and that's what we wanted our money for.
Right.
If you're doing more than that, then, then our fee schedule needs to be considered.
Yeah, because I was saying, counter issues are roofing and roofing, siding, windows,
Hot water heaters.
Hot water heaters, furnaces, anything like that.
Basically, it's basically all those ninety-five talent loads.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
To Frank and now, are they actually, you, you talk pictures. So are they just doing their final based on pictures supplied by the resident? Or are they actually going out to the site to do a final?
I believe with the roofing, the contractor issues or sends the photographs of the ice and water and the D edge and all the things that they do.
Okay, so they're getting ninety-five dollars for somebody to look at a picture, somebody has sent.
Now, when, when I did my roof this last fall, they came out, they were on site, they took pictures to show the, the ice and water and the drip edge and but then the final product, the contractor sent the pictures.
Okay, right. It would just be interesting to know what, what are they going out and
They, they came out for anything you couldn't see afterwards. So they, they didn't trust the contractors, say, I got the ice and water and those things. So if it's going to get covered up, they went first and then the final product, they when I put my furnace in, they did come out and check the final product.
Does some of the insurance send your, we're just, they're looking at ours. The insurance is sending out someone to inspect it.
Ours, the insurance didn't see anybody out, they
Oh, that's
They flew it overhead, they, they do it with video overhead now.
Oh, really? Oh, ours is coming to the house.
Depends on your insurance company.
Yeah, my, my buddy who's, who's an adjuster, he's going house to house, but my insurance company just said, we're going to fly it.
Okay.
Does the city have a fee schedule? Must have a fee schedule.
Yes. By ordinance. We didn't cover the planning related.
Bring that up to the council, change the fee schedule?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to talk about what that fee schedule should be. Because right now, if we're not covering the, the office cost, that's, it's one of those things, it's probably why we didn't fully understand all the work was going on because it, it's invisible. And we're saying, okay, we're covering it through the planner, we're covering it through the building official, we're covering it through these others. But how much of that is or should be done by office staff? You know, how much of Liz's cost, you know, maybe there's something that office staff could do at a lower rate than a hundred dollars an hour that makes sense if you had the staff to do it. On the other hand, you're already doing things, but we're not capturing those costs anywhere, so we're not truly breaking even on our fee schedule. You know, the, the similar thing on if, if recycling, you know, what's the cost on recycling if you don't take into account Kelly and Adrienne? So maybe our fees there need to be adjusted.
Do you include any of Joe or Eric's on recycling?
In recycling?
Yeah.
I did, but I didn't this year. Or I mean for twenty-three.
Pretty small for those two.
Yeah.
The other, the other thing that's probably worth asking again, I don't know if you've talked to the county lately, but we used to have the sentence to serve. And they, they, they limited that during COVID. But if things are settling down now, maybe they're getting back to sentence to serve and that could cover some of the costs there as well.
Mr. Mayor, the last conversation I had with Soudal is they are not doing that at this point and they don't believe they'll be getting back to it. Adrienne and I did have a conversation with Soudal and Clean Sinclair from the Coon Rapids Recycle Center. And they use some DOC people. And so that is on Adrienne's list to look at during the winter time when it's slower, that what is the DOC program and what can they help us with as far as assistance, such as the sentence to serve from the county used to.
Because that would be, if we, if we were considering using personnel in parks as well, you know, if we could balance DOC or some other coverage there and utilize that person in addition of a work, so.
I take it back, I did put two and a half percent of each Eric and Joe. So two and a half percent of their time is in the recycling fund. Anything more about revenues? We'll check, we'll do the, the fee schedule and check out if we, we can recommend some changes there.
And then those, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
So anything we do change to a fee schedule, then we have to adopt in January?
Yes, yep. Or December or January first.
We could do December.
So page thirteen has Mayor, Council and Administration on there. We already kind of talked about what the, the additional full-time people and the additional part-time person. That's really the major changes. We are moving the, the cost of the newsletter and things like that up into Administration rather than down in General Government. And you can see there that it's actually being coded to the appropriate place in the two thousand two, twenty-two column.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Raino.
In regards to the newsletter, a portion of the SCORE funds should be being used for the newsletter. I don't know, Adrienne was going to call and ask Sue, what percentage should we be using? Because part of our contract is that we provide information to our residents and the avenue that we used was the newsletter.
Okay.
So a portion of the, the designing and printing postage should be coming out of the SCORE funds.
Okay.
And I, I have a feeling they're going to say, well, you decide, but I don't, I, I don't think we've ever done that, to my knowledge, so.
So when I look back, we used to charge, back in twenty twenty, we charged recycling twenty-two hundred dollars for the newsletter. And we had done it all the way in eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay.
We just didn't do it in twenty-one.
Okay.
And we haven't done it yet in twenty-two. There's actual budget there of twenty-three hundred dollars. So we can actually do that, charge.
Yeah, it, it would make sense because we advertise our recycling days, we advertise our recycling fees.
So I'll go ahead and change.
Why we wouldn't have done that in twenty twenty-one?
Change that. I think we just missed it in twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-two, it was there, and one newsletter didn't get out. Was that twenty twenty?
That was twenty.
Can I, I want to ask this, but in, on the Office Administration, three-ten, expert in professional services, hundred and seventy-five thousand this year?
Yeah. I'm, it was eighty-eight thousand on Lers. And then I'm projecting five and a half months of the, the interim city administrator there. Assuming he's out of here by August something.
Okay.
I don't know.
You are brutal.
So obviously, next year, the, the budget drops down substantially. Because I don't think you'll need Lers and, and you definitely won't need a interim city administrator. But you can, you know, it's offset by the, the full-time, you can see there, your full-time salaries are only eighty-nine thousand, so
Yep.
You know, that's the offset. Because overall, you're still, well, you're over budget a little, but not much. All right. Any other questions for Office or on page thirteen that we need to look into? I'm going to reduce the newsletter budget down to five grand and we'll put two grand over in the, in the recycling fund. Again, no election, I, you do have to pay the, the county a lease every year. I think it's nine hundred and some bucks for their equipment. And then the finance and assessing, no, no increase in assessing, none aware of. And anticipating your audit costs are going to go up and possibly your accounting costs, depending on where we're at. We kind of looked at legal. I guess somebody, Scott's going to call them and find out, you know, what's going on there as far as prosecuting attorney. If we go to page fifteen. The general fund budget, the twenty thousand dollars, that's basically the RT, RT, what is that? RBS, that's it.
RBs?
RBs, yes, RBs. And the internet, no, no, the internet is in a different line item, that's the ninety-one twenty. Insurance. You know, that probably
You're saying the professional services on Fund One Hundred is, that's RBs?
Primarily RBs, there might be some other miscellaneous items in there too, let's see here.
And where did you say the, the internet?
That's on line three-twenty-three, Communications Internet. And it's ninety-one twenty.
That would include the firewall?
I have seven hundred and sixty dollars times twelve, so whatever that, we came up with that number in our meeting.
Yeah, because, because a portion of that goes to, fire portion goes here. So that's the number for the office.
That's, so when we were
Four hundred dollars a month for the fire department. Four hundred dollars a month for this building.
Four hundred?
With, with, with the firewall. With, with the firewall.
So.
We didn't know there was a two hundred dollar a month firewall being thrown in there. That's from RBs.
All right, so when I look at the detail from this year. ARVIG is, is, you know, it, I thought that their normal expense was gonna be seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents. So seven hundred and sixty bucks, otherwise we've paid them thirty-seven hundred dollars so far this year. But I thought that that was some kind of a, a setup charge or, I don't know.
Yeah, there were one-time charges in there.
Yeah. And I thought the normal, what I understood for ARVIG was, it was going to be seven hundred and sixty dollars a month.
Well, let's, let's look at the ARVIG after you just paid that bill, right?
I haven't paid it yet.
Okay, so let's take a look.
It was one paid in July, it was one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents. So I don't know what that was. But that's to ARVIG, so that, and so right now, the RBS is in there, under the three-ten is RBS only. And then there was a mediation services, mediation and restorative service of five hundred bucks. So we're paying RBS about eighteen thousand dollars a year. And then I threw in a couple thousand dollars for like mediation restoration services and little things that come up that we're not planning. So yeah, that, that's, the ARVIG, like I said, is only seven sixty a month. And that, that includes everything, I, I didn't break out the fire into their own. So.
Yeah, that's, oh, that's not including the firewall, cause that's going to RBs.
Oh, the firewall is going to RBs?
No, they're the ones, yeah, doing, providing that.
Well, and so they're already charging you for it, I mean.
I don't know, RBs bills keep changing. So.
Their, their bill is about thirteen hundred and seventy, thirteen eighty a month is what they're charging you.
Yeah, so.
And then they have a, a six ninety-seven that they charged in May, and I don't know what that was.
Mr. Mayor, so what they do is anytime we ask them to do anything over and above what their monthly fee is, we get a charge. So like tomorrow, they're gonna come out and install the new computer station. We will get a bill for that. That six hundred and ninety-seven was for setting up the firewalls at the, at the fire station and at the main office. So anything above their main security base, they charge for.
Yeah, that's why you have to have a little bit of extra in there.
Right.
Besides what their monthly bill is, the, the thirteen eighty. And then additional charges.
The four, the four hundred is in.
So, so if we could just have you guys check and see what it is we've been paying for, where the firewalls come in on a monthly basis, are they charging annually or monthly for that? And anything else you anticipate that we're gonna need from that. And then right now, we've got three additional, the league has supplied three additional services that we can investigate in addition to RBs to see if there's a, something better for us.
And I, we do have one meeting set up for August second.
And that's CIT?
The CIT.
Yeah, so CIT is one of them that the league supplied, there's two others. So I forwarded that information to Frank. There's also some security information that the league provided in that that we'll wanna share with all staff, so. And Frank has that, so. And I'm assuming when you get those things, you're probably copying Mr. Lehner or. Have a file that you will, once we get him signed up. Happy quick.
That fly's trapped it.
There is a fly swatter back in the kitchen.
He's little.
This, this happens.
Leave me alone.
This time of year, I don't know why they get in here, but it's crazy. I pushed him here.
Bet you.
The other large change, change is your gas utility bills.
Yeah, I bet.
It's like, what? So, I mean, we, this is really unusual, that, that is extremely high.
So let me ask Frank, so in that, would the LP be in there?
Yeah, it should be.
So that would be high this year because once we started heating the recycling center with not just one, but two furnaces. And we staff it all the time, so the furnaces are on, they were going through a lot of LPs. So we're looking at converting, we've approved converting to natural gas.
Well, this says all center point energy.
Really?
This is all center point energy.
So where's the LP?
Probably in the recycling fund.
Yes.
Why'd you guys set the thermostats at this year?
Seventy? I don't know, I never touched it.
That's, that's a big increase.
It is, it's, I mean, it's, um, cause so far this year, we've spent seventy-seven hundred dollars. That's double what we spent last year in total.
For gas?
For gas, for, for center point energy, I don't know what's going on. It's like we're paying, I don't know, what are we paying for? I don't know.
Buy them a new truck or something?
Does the whole fire station heat it?
Yeah, that's what I mean about that.
So are we maybe charging it here instead of to the fire? Is that what's going on?
Well, the, the fire station had gas, cause they, they've always heated the truck.
Yeah, gas at the fire is only thirteen hundred, and we've only charged them January and March and May.
Okay, that's.
So maybe we're not charging.
Probably my mistake if I'm not putting it out.
We're not allocating it to fire. So we'll take, we'll take a look at that, yeah. I'll highlight that in green, we'll take a look, see what's going on.
Cause they then, line four oh five there, repair maintenance contractual, I know you, Natalie, you kept saying we got repair maintenance contractual all over the place.
Right, and we're, so we're just gonna go down to repair and maintenance for, in here. We're gonna get rid of the contractual.
So last year, we, we budgeted twelve-five, didn't spend anything.
Right, I moved that up to professional services, that's really was RBS.
Okay.
And then we're budgeting five thousand for repair and maintenance this year.
Does that include tightening up the building so it doesn't squeak in the wind?
I don't know.
We're just getting a new anchor. All right.
And then there's miscellaneous dues and subscriptions. That includes public works for six thousand, metro cities for twenty-one hundred twenty dollars, and small cities for twenty-two forty-one. So there's three basic, and then there's another one for two hundred and thirty dollars, I don't know what that one is. But anyway, that's what the ninety-eight hundred is for. So public works has to, they're, they pay membership dues for their training and all that kind of stuff, I guess.
Yeah, the safety.
Yep. And then you have metro cities of twenty-one twenty and small cities of twenty-two forty-one. And those are optional, I believe. So I don't know, you know, if you wanna do those or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question on the four thirty-three, the dues and subscriptions. You said public works, so safety training, isn't that part of our insurance? Doesn't our insurance cover that?
It's safety aware or, yeah, I think that's a name.
Isn't that part of our insurance?
We pay a separate cost for that. No, LM CIT does some things. And in fact, you know, it used to be that if you wanted LM CIT to insure you, you had to be a member. That was their hook, I suspect, it's the safety stories.
And actually, I don't even have all of those subscriptions in here, I'm just looking at, that adds up to more than, that should be ten thousand something, nine thousand eight hundred.
You'll look, you'll look at that and clean that one up.
So my question is, do you wanna have a membership with the metro cities and the small cities? Which is going to be four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. So it would be, this would be ten thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And I don't know what the advantage is for the metro cities and the small cities, I can't address that, sorry. Don't know if somebody else knows the advantages or disadvantages.
Well, I'll take a look at that one, cause that's, I think that information just came in.
Yes, it did.
So.
And now we are cleaning the office, so we hired a office cleaner. We have to budget for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Angel.
But that's to, to Lori and to Natalie, that's the city offices, that's town hall and, and the fire department. That is correct.
The fire department plays for their own.
Cause they have their own, do they have a different company?
Same company.
Same company, but they have, they get charged.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. So.
Yeah.
So that thirty-eight is here.
Just for the, here, yeah.
Here in the city offices.
Yep, yep. All right, no changes really in planning and zoning, engineering. Again, we'll, Natalie and I will take a look at that, make sure that the projection. But I think the budget at forty-seven is pretty good, just based on twenty-one and twenty. Fire management, we met with the assistant, is he assistant fire chief? Adam?
Yeah.
And talked about their budget here and had some questions that he was going to address for us.
Have you heard back from them yet?
No.
Three down. We got three of them so far.
No, we have not heard back from them yet, so. I don't recall exactly what it was that we were, I think we were asking about professional services, what, there's some additional dollars in there besides what the Anoka County Fire Protection Council charges you. And so I was questioning that. Otherwise, yeah. And maybe at the next meeting in, in August, you might want to have either the fire chief or the fire assistant, and then maybe Joe from public works come and address their budgets because they are changing so much.
So you, you were going to check with Deputy Chief Shrogg and Assistant Chief Shrogg, whatever, for these numbers, then there were also some questions on the capital plan. What could be capitalized and what would have to be.
Oh, that's right, yes, yeah, yeah.
Cause there were some things that looked like they hadn't capital that wouldn't.
Right.
Wouldn't fit there and some things that maybe, I don't know if there's anything here that would go over to the capital plan, but it certainly did seem like.
Right.
This might be affected by that, putting it in the wrong spot. Or.
Yes.
Putting it in a better spot.
Yep. And I did do an analysis and I do have a, a new spreadsheet for them to take a look at as far as spending the bond money that you're referring to.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, training, we, we were projecting thirteen-six this year. You know, we didn't know what they planned for training actually. I, I do know that they had said that as they move in and they get these one-time costs down and they understand their other costs better, they could tighten this up over previous years. Their projection for the budget twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-three is a, a twenty-six thousand dollar improvement, but.
But it's still higher than what they're expending this year.
Yes.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I think there's room for, for tightening up there, definitely.
Now, they have, they have gas in here too.
Yes, they do, I.
And what the heck is the? Can we leave the door open on?
I think a couple months haven't been charged here, so that might change their, their budget. I think we charged it to the office, yeah, so we'll take a look at that.
But even still, we, we only.
We spent.
Budgeted, I gotta write, utility service gas, twenty-three hundred, we spent twenty-seven hundred.
Well, that's my projection, so that's not actual.
Yeah.
Um, so far this year, we've spent fourteen hundred dollars on gas. But like I say, I think that was some of the, it looks like January, March and May. So we're missing February and April and, and so this probably will go up. And I don't know, I'm sure there's no gas being charged there in June, July and August. So I'm assuming they're gonna have gas charges for October, November, December. So that's why I doubled what they've paid so far. So.
Yeah, it just seems though, if they're picking up a portion of it.
Right. Why was ours, why is the other one up so high, I don't know? I don't know, it's a very good question.
Check that meter.
Yeah. There were a couple high, March, January and a, uh, hmm, it says January electric, but it went to center point energy, not to Conexus, I don't know. But yeah, the January one for city hall, I'm assuming was thirteen hundred dollars. And March was twelve hundred dollars, which is really high.
For here?
For here, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can, I'll pull all the bills.
Yeah.
And see what they were.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take a look.
And I will take full blame if I've got it miscoded because of the different buildings.
But I mean, they, they've been paid, so they gotta be charged somewhere, so.
Yeah, it just, it just seems unusual, there, there hasn't been that much use in this building and we've got, you know, programmable thermostats, so I.
Are you talking this building or city hall? I don't know, cause I don't know.
We, we call this city hall, that's city office.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just saying the bill for city is.
I'm assuming this and that are together.
I'm assuming so too. I mean, they, they probably come separate, there's three bills in January, one for six hundred and thirty dollars, one for two hundred and forty dollars and one for thirteen hundred dollars.
So they all come on one bill?
Okay.
And they're just separated out? And I think I had some confusion as to whether I needed to charge it to government buildings or separate it out?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
The fire station's heated, now they've got the training room. The shop is heated and you've got the offices. And then this is heated all on programmable thermostats.
And the recycling center is heated with LP tanks?
Yes.
And you're saying that's, that's under recycling and under LP?
I don't know yet, so let's see.
That should be Bodry.
Yeah, probably, yes, Bodry is under recycling. Lakes Gas Company.
Yeah, it's turned into Lakes.
Okay.
Well, it wasn't, Bodry didn't, oh, what's the other one?
Cash.
We use cash gas.
Cash gas is Lakes.
It's Lakes.
Oh, Bodry is a diesel fueler and stuff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this Lakes Gas is the recycling and Bodry is the hauling. Oh, no, this was.
Bodry should be the diesel.
The diesel fuel.
For who?
Public Works.
Public Works.
All, it got charged to recycling. Forty-two hundred dollars.
Well, that's probably because I thought it was their heating.
Yeah.
At that time.
We'll take a look at these and, and get them, yes, we'll get them corrected, so. We'll get some coding corrections. Go biggie. No biggie. Alright, um, let's see, where were we? Fire. So yeah, hopefully the fire will get, they'll get back to us, and, uh, maybe they can do some tightening here.
So, so on the, uh, just for quick reference, three oh five, professional services, fire, that's the contract.
Yep.
It's gone up to three percent as contracted. Three-ten, what are those professional services?
So I, I questioned Dave about that, because I know what the Anoka County Fire Protection Council's costs are going to be, and he sent me an email saying that there's other professional services that will be charged there.
So we'll find out what those are.
Well, he gave me a list, but he didn't say specifically, he just said others, and, um.
Like, like I said, we'll, we'll find out what those are.
Okay, yeah. And, and I did, we did talk about that with the assistant chief, and so.
That where he's putting the fire protection council?
Yes, that's where the fire protection council goes. And I had budgeted that to be six thousand, and I don't think it's gonna be that high. Um, they're having a meeting on this Thursday, and, um, I don't think the new proposed, um, charges will go through, so it'll be, go back down to thirty-six hundred.
Where are they meeting on Thursday?
Uh, Fridley. Emily Fridley. So that number could go down also. Okay. Building inspections, I guess I, you know, I'm trying to guesstimate it based on usage and. Obviously, I think we were under, under budgeting for twenty-two. Hopefully, twenty-three will be closer. And then Public Works, the biggest change there, you can see motor fuels. Were increasing the budget by fifteen thousand dollars, projecting we're gonna spend about twenty-five thousand this year. And more next year. I moved, I, I broke out repairs, street maintenance, into crack filling and patchwork, so you can see what, what the plan is anyway for, for twenty-three. And so I reduced the repairs and street budget by fifty thousand, and then increased crack filling and patchwork by what, um, Shane had projected. For twenty-three. Increased the winter salt sand, fifteen thousand dollars.
Didn't we not do any of that in twenty and twenty-one?
Well, we probably did, but it was all lumped into repairs and, and maintenance, you know?
Okay.
Part of that forty-one thousand. But not that, but Joe really wanted it broken out, so we broke it out. And the gravel is now broken out also, it's still at sixty-seven thousand. Um, and then the, the calcium chloride is now broken out, and it's, I'm budgeting forty-six based on what you're paying this year. I don't know if you'll need that much, but I, I don't, I don't know.
Forty-five this year, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the people on the gravel road want it.
Yeah. And then the parks, it's going up slightly, because we've got the recycling guy in here now, too. And just maybe more, more time being allocated to parks rather than to Public Works, just a reallocation.
Thirty-six miles of gravel roads? Thirteen hundred bucks a mile to maintain them, just in calcium chloride? And we don't do all of them?
Yeah, it's only eleven miles, isn't it? Or is it eleven roads?
I mean, I know that, I mean, it's only, we don't do very many of them, right?
We do not, I wanna say it's probably maybe thirteen miles, but those that we do are, they need it.
The pass, pass-through roads for the most part, right?
Mm-hmm.
High, high volume.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to see us do.
Pass-through roads, high volume?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'd like to be able to see us.
Thirty-six hundred bucks a mile.
Do more of, of our roads.
Probably cheaper to tar them.
Yeah, really, starting to saw that way, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thirty-six hundred dollars a mile.
Right.
Per year.
Well, and that's one of the reasons to look at how we can partner with others to try to bring that down.
Well, that's, that's the other discussion we've had, we, because we, we assess the tumulus roads, and we improve those. And, and people that live on the gravel, we, that's just to sort of encourage, that doesn't include the gravel we're putting down or the grading we're doing either.
But we also don't assess for crack filling and.
Right.
Maintenance to, you know, miscellaneous maintenance to the.
Right, to the, on the roads.
But we haven't introduced like a franchising fee or anything?
No, yeah, we don't have anything like that.
I just, that's a lot, that's a lot for, you know, we, it doesn't look like we broke that out in the past either, when you look at it, it's fifty thousand dollars to eleven miles a road or twelve miles a road.
On sixty-seven thousand to gravel them.
Yeah.
And we don't gravel all over roads either.
No.
And I, and.
They're on at least on rotation, and then every so many years, they're gonna get hit, right? It's just.
Depends on their overall condition, some of them get hit more often than others, again, it's, if they're more traffic, and they have a worse base, they tend to get a lot more gravel. If they're dead end and have a relatively decent base, they get very little, so they're not, they're not exactly rotational. The dust control, I mean, it was a few years back, it was proposed to do every gravel road in the city, but that was a lot more reasonable material cost. Part of the material cost and part of it was fuel, for people delivering it.
Are most of these people hoping to get tarred roads?
No.
No.
Nope, anybody who's asked for tarred roads has gotten it, these are all people that don't want tarred roads. I mean, there might be an occasional person on there, there's one street, it's a dead end, and everybody on the streets that lived there for years is absolutely against tar. Person on the end with the expensive cars wants a tar.
Can't blame them.
Well, and calcium, too, I mean, I want to say when I first got on the council, it was probably twenty thousand, maybe twenty-one thousand dollars to do it. So, I mean, that cost theirs, and we have to, you know, it's, it's their vehicle, their equipment, but then we have, Joe's got a grade the day before, and then we have a truck follow them.
And we didn't do that this year, he did not do it the day before because of the way July fourth.
The way the holiday was, maybe like the Friday before.
I'm told the quality reflected that fact.
Suffer.
Yeah, now, I can't tell you exactly what that means, I'm sorry.
Guess the dogs are a little beat up before they spray it or whatever.
There's a holiday weekend, more traffic on them.
Okay. But again, an opportunity there to investigate alternative vendors, and, you know, if we, if we get going early in the game, maybe we can reduce that cost. Heck, if it was, the other vendor in this case was even higher. But this does not contemplate the consortium you were talking.
Right.
Can I ask on the fire department here, excuse me, on the parks, you list sixteen thousand in full-time employees, who is that?
Okay, it is Joe and, and, um, and Eric.
Okay, good, thus far.